Please be sure to turn on your closed captioning as individual captioning is available. If you're viewing this meeting through a mobile device, you can access closed captioning through the Chicago Park District's YouTube page to view the meeting with captions. A link to the Park District's YouTube page is on the screen and can also be found in the chat. So would everyone please join me in reciting the Pledge of Allegiance? "I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all." This public hearing is being held on the 2022 Proposed Operating Budget Report and Tentative Appropriations Ordinance of the Chicago Park District. Notice of this public hearing was published on Friday, October 29, 2021, in the Chicago Sun-Times, a newspaper of general circulation within the Chicago area, and was also made available on the Chicago Park District's website. Additionally, three copies were available for public inspection in the Office of the Secretary. The public hearing is being held at 11:22 a.m. on this Wednesday, November 10, 2021. Additionally, this meeting is being held virtually via an electronic platform to protect the public's health and adherence to Senate Bill 2135, Article 15, Section 155, the amended Open Meetings Act 511 CS 120, Section 7, subsection E4, and in continued observance of the Governor's orders pursuant to COVID-19, Executive Order Number 92, and the gubernatorial disaster proclamation filed on October 15, 2021. As such, the district has deemed it necessary to continue to hold its meetings virtually. Will the Secretary please take a roll call of the Commissioners?
Of course. Commissioner Edwards?
Here.
Commissioner Netski?
Here.
Commissioner Munoz? Commissioner Hamilton?
Here.
Commissioner Vae?
Here.
Vice President King?
Here.
And President Lavell?
Here.
Quorum is present, however, please be advised that this hearing is informational and for the purposes of hearing public input. Please let the record reflect that interim General Superintendent and CEO Rosa Escarino is also in attendance.
Thank you. Okay, additionally, any Commissioner who is not able to be present for this hearing will have the opportunity to review comments from this meeting via videotape and transcript and weigh the comments presented in consideration of the 2022 Proposed Operating Budget Report and the Tentative Appropriations Ordinance. I do believe that Commissioner Munoz intends to join us. I did talk to him shortly before the meeting started. So this meeting is hereby called to order. At this time, interim General Superintendent and CEO Rosa Escarino will address the public. Hi, Rosa.
Good morning. Can everyone hear me?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, great. Well, good morning, Park Board President Ava Slavell and the members of the Board of Commissioners. I thank you for the opportunity to come before you today. It is an honor to present the Chicago Park District 2022 budget. Apologies, I'm trying to get my... This budget represents our organization's principles and guides the Park District's core values, with an emphasis on delivering quality and affordable recreational opportunities. With nearly one month of working at the Park District, I've witnessed firsthand how our longstanding mission to bring children and families into our parks to stay and play for a lifetime has not wavered. And I am pleased to say that the 2022 recommended budget renews this commitment and does much more. At this moment, as residents continue to deal with this pandemic and as we collectively work to overcome the challenges facing our organization and rebuild trust among the community and our employees, I cannot think of a more crucial and critical mission than that of the Chicago Park District. Providing every Chicago resident with world-class amenities, delivering essential programs and recreational opportunities, all while reaffirming and reinforcing our workforce's values, training, and safety. This $510.9 million spending plan I offer today was developed with much rigor and careful consideration and is steeped in a commitment to serving all Chicago. The 2022 budget is a balanced financial blueprint that will meet our residents' needs by focusing on equity in our programming and amenities across the city while ensuring a safe environment that is respectful to park patrons and employees. The Chicago Park District plays a crucial role in the lives of our residents. The pandemic has severely tested all Chicagoans, our physical and mental health, our sense of community, our connection to friends and neighbors, as well as with our colleagues. Chicago's parks serve as center of wellness and community pride. Just last Friday, I attended the 72nd Annual Mumble at Soldier Field. This amazing event brought young athletes from the West Side against players from the South Side, when La Follette Park faced Lindblom Park at the annual Junior Bear Football Championship. I was inspired by the sportsmanship, leadership, and the pride in the faces of so many young people. The players, the cheerleaders, were joined by the coaches, families, and friends. It was an honor to be part of this event because this is a prime example of all of the programming and incredible work being done across our Park District by staff and also the amazing resources that we provide to the families in every community. So I want to take a minute to thank the hundreds of Park District employees that work tirelessly every day for the betterment of our community. The most valuable resources, the most valuable resource in our agency are our workers, and I want to thank all of you for your service. From the Austin Town Hall on the West Side to Calumet Park on the Southeast Side, from Loyola Park in the Far North to Gately in the Far South, neighborhoods rely on their parks for fitness and cultural programs, as well as access to historic fieldhouses and numerous nature spaces. Parks are one of the many trademarks of our great city. That is why I'm excited to share with you today a proposed budget that restores and builds upon all the great programs and services on which so many Chicagoans rely. This $510.9 million budget represents our commitment to restore programming to pre-pandemic levels while also introducing new programs to Chicago families in 2022. While last year's budget was reduced due to pandemic-related budget cuts, this year's recommendation is a 2.4% higher than that of 2020, growth that is consistent with the trend over the last decade. Through this budget, we will invest $126 million in programming, which will allow us to offer much-needed and sought-after programs at pre-pandemic levels, including Park Kids, Summer Day Camp, Inner City Hoops, and Girls' Fast Pitch Softball, just to name a few. In addition to the restoration of our most popular and beloved programs, in 2022, we will also establish new recreational activities. These include Soccer for Success, a program that will launch as part of the after-school programming and serve more than 1,000 kids in its first year, the introduction of a new wrestling program, Culture in the Neighborhood, a program in coordination with the Chicago Department of Cultural Affairs and Special Events, as well as with the Chicago Public Library. This will broaden and deepen our community engagement in neighborhoods and civic spaces. And one of my favorite, the expansion of girls' sports programming through the Go Girl Go Camp and the Girls' Play Program at locations throughout the entire city. Over the past year and a half, the COVID-19 pandemic affected everyone. As essential community anchors, parks sustained operations during the pandemic and still serve 48,000 youth citywide in 2020 and 2021, both virtually and in person. During the pandemic, many parks remained open and available to our residents and served as resources for exercise, rested, and stability during the time of uncertainty. Many Chicagoans discovered our nature areas during this time, places like North Park Village, Big Marsh, Jackson Park, Steelworkers Park, and many other parks served as sources of comfort and leisure. And while we are no longer in the worst of the pandemic, I invite all of Chicago, every resident, to make parks a vital part of their daily lives and their journey to greater health, to visit, to walk, to truly take advantage of these great natural outdoor treasures that we call our own. Program offerings also never ceased during the height of the pandemic. Park staff, from fitness instructors to trainers to youth counselors, all went viral and stayed engaged with the multitude of Chicagoans who count on those programs. We also continue moving forward on our long-term and essential community investments. These include the completion of the Ford Calumet Environmental Center at the Far South Side, designed to serve as a hub for eco-recreational education, the opening of a community plaza and roller rink on Madison Street, an investment that delivers on a variety of much-needed activities and programs for youth in the West Garfield Park community, and the groundbreaking of our new 17-acre campus in Brighton Park community. This new facility will bring greatly needed amenities and green space to the neighborhood while making the new Park District headquarters more accessible to community residents and puts us right in the community. This important project comes as we complete transcendent projects in the past year. These include the Gately Park Track and Field Center in Roseland and the Recreational Center at Adams Park on the West Side. Through all of these great programs and investments, 2022 dedicated return to pre-pandemic budget. This includes an increase in staffing and other expenditures to allow the restoration of full programming. And great news for our families, we are able to offer this increase in programming without raising fees. In order to keep our services affordable, this budget is, I'm sorry, this budget does recommend a nominal property tax increase of $4.5 million, which translates to $4 to the average homeowner this coming year, the cost of one or two cups of coffee. This increase will allow the Park District to make additional investments, such as program expansion in youth athletics, the development of five new nature place spaces, and continued improvement in upgrades to fieldhouses and park facilities across the city. It is important to note, this marks just the fifth time in 16 years that the Park District has implemented a small property tax increase. Like any public agency, the Chicago Park District's pension is an integral element of our budget equation. In 2022, the Park District will allocate an additional $8 million above last year's payment toward the pension fund. This will keep our promise to present and future retirees while balancing our responsibility to the taxpayers. As stewards of taxpayer dollars, we also are working diligently, have worked diligently to find savings in the 2022 budget. This has been done by identifying efficiencies and employee healthcare benefits without impacting coverage provided to our workforce, finding savings in utility costs across facilities, and through debt restructuring. Today, as you all know, the Chicago Park District faces some serious challenges. While we take great pride in our workforce, I know that we have failed too many of our staff and eroded trust with the community. This will not be tolerated. The moment requires, this moment requires action, change, reform, and vision. This is why, as part of our plan to restore trust with our employees and the community, we will establish the new Office of Protection. The Office will intake and investigate all allegations of prohibited discrimination, harassment, and abuse. In addition, the Park District will amplify the depth and volume of staffed training to ensure all employees are prepared to identify, prevent, and report misconduct. Awareness, compassion, and support will be the hallmark of our organization. Every Chicago Park District employee will have the proper tools and training and will carry responsibility to be there for their colleagues and the residents that they serve. By the end of this year, more than 3,000 park staff members will have participated in sexual harassment training, but this work is far from over. Along with you, the members of the board, I am committed to establishing the Office of Protection and look forward to working with each of you to ensure that this is an appropriately funded and active change. We will work together to bring about long-term cultural change that is much needed, one of transparency and accountability. It is the obligation of all of us to make certain that safety and respect are of the highest priority at the Park District as we deliver on the needs of Chicago residents. The Chicago Park District reaches hundreds of thousands of residents across all 77 community areas through thousands of programs at more than 600 parks. It is a critical part of who we are as a city. Equity is at the forefront of how we serve families. Residents in every corner of the city rely on our organization for top-notch recreational programming, facilities, and green spaces. And I am proud that we are able to offer all these programs without an increase in fees, ensuring that our services remain accessible and affordable in the coming year. In addition, in 2022, families in need will have access to more than $2.8 million in financial assistance. No child will be excluded from programming due to their inability to pay. In 2019, this fund sent nearly 4,300 children to date camp, made it possible for 1,100 kids to learn to swim, and enabled more than 1,500 families to access vital after-school programming. We look forward to supporting these families and kids again in this budget. Inclusion also remains a vital part of our services. Our special recreation programming leads to change, I'm sorry, leads the change in providing opportunities and events tailored to youth and adults with disabilities, our veterans, and our seniors. Our special recreation division plans to hold over 1,800 programs in 2022, and we are estimating nearly 15,000 special Olympic participants in our programs. The budget before you today addresses the greatest areas of need in programming, staffing, capital investment, and organizational change. As I stated in the beginning, this is a document that defines the Chicago Park District's role in serving families by providing safe park recreational experiences and affords us the opportunity to give every Chicago resident a chance to play in world-class parks. I want to thank you again for this opportunity today. At this time, I will ask Steve Lux, I'm sorry, Steve Lux, our Chief Financial Officer, to provide a high-level overview of the budget. As you know, a fuller presentation and time for questions will take place as you consider the budget for approval at our meeting on December 1st. So let me turn it over to Steve. Steve?
Thank you. For the record, Commissioner Munoz has joined the meeting during the budget address.
Thank you, interim Superintendent and CEO Escarino. Good morning, President Lavell and Commissioners. The 2022 recommended budget really represents two major themes. The first is that the district is getting back to pre-pandemic levels in our operations and includes various initiatives, as previously mentioned, that align with our core values of children first, best deal in town, built to last, and extra effort. The second item is incorporating the funding requirements of the pension legislation that was passed by the General Assembly in May and signed by the Governor in August. I would like to also point out that Jeff Schellhorn, our Budget Director, will, as in years past, present at the December Board Meeting the budget more detailed than I will with today's highlights. Sir, if you could go to the first slide?
Yes, one second, we're getting it up.
So the first slide shows a summary and comparison of the proposed 2022 recommended budget to the previous year's budgets. Sir, I think it's the other presentation you need.
One second, sorry about that.
It's okay.
Jamies, would you just go ahead to slide two?
Thank you.
Okay.
So as you can see, that the 2022 recommended budget is a $510.9 million spending plan, which is a 6.1% increase above the fiscal year 21 adopted budget. As noted previously, this seems like a large increase, but the 2021 budget was affected by the pandemic and was $5.8 million lower than the 2020 budget. Their series recommendation is roughly a 2.4% annual increase from the 2020 budget, which is in line with the average growth of our budgets over the last 10 years. As a part of this budget, we've also maintained our long-term reserve at $96 million, and the other reserve is mentioned on the slide. If you go to the next slide? So this slide breaks out our operating revenues in the format of a pie chart. As you can see, that property tax is the largest component at 58% or $298 million. We are roughly about 5% of the homeowners or business taxes billed and represent about $263 on the average homeowner's bill. Next is the assets that are managed by our third parties, which is $99 million or 19%. And you can see a list of those assets on the right-hand side, going all the way from Soldier Field down to the Combat Rec Center. PPRT, which is the Personal Property Replacement Tax, which is a tax on the net income of corporations, is 10% or $49 million. Park fees, which represent not only our program revenues but also permits from the size of Lollapalooza all the way down to a family picnic, is 6% of our total revenues. And although the pie is growing, the percentages are very consistent across budget years. You can go to the next slide? So same as the revenue slide, the expense pie is consistent with the prior year as well. Those percentages are roughly the same. Personal expenses, which includes salaries and wages, benefits, payroll expenses, and the pension, is 49% of our budget or $248 million. Debt service, which also is lower than it is last year, is approximately 13% or $64 million. The operating expenses and management fees of the managed assets, which were shown on the previous slide, is also 12% of the 2022 recommended budget, and the subsidies to the aquarium, museum, and zoo are the same as last year. I'd like to point out that when you look at our salaries and wages, 55% of that relates to recreation and programming. Operations and maintenance is another 35%, which basically covers our landscaping and our trade positions. The last slide shows the major changes over year, year-over-year between the 2021 approved budget and the 2022 recommended budget. So on the revenue side, we have several items. You look at managed assets, it's primarily an expected growth in revenue from getting back to pre-pandemic levels, with almost half of that increase is being driven from Soldier Field, who has scheduled many more large events than we had during the pandemic. In addition, we've had increased occupancy is expected in the harbor system and a slight increase on slip rentals as well as increased usage at our golf facilities. That represents a combined 22% of that increase. The personal property replacement tax has had significant growth in 2021 and has already exceeded our 2021 estimate, with two distributions still remaining. We've estimated a 16% increase or $7 million compared to the 2021 budget, and we feel that this is conservative and appropriate. The increase in property taxes is comprised of two components. The first is not an increase to the existing homeowners or businesses and represents the value of new property and TIF expirations. The second component is an increase of $4.5 million, net of a $200,000 loss in cost factor. This, as the Superintendent mentioned earlier, represents only the fifth increase in 16 years and is $4 to the average homeowner. Lastly, park fees represent program revenues and permits with the increase relating to getting back to normal operations, and a large part of that increase really is on the permit side, budgeting, for instance, a normal Lollapalooza and marathon. So that increase is primarily driven by the permit side, not necessarily by the programming. When you look at the expenditure changes that are also listed, you see that over half the increase in salaries and wages relates to getting back to the pre-pandemic levels of hiring. In the prior year budget, we had a six-month hiring freeze included and shutdown days for the Park District in order to help balance the budget. Those have been eliminated in this year budget. The remainder is primarily contractual and minimum wage increases. The pension increase, as was mentioned before, is $8.8 million and represents the third year of four years for a ramp up to actuarial funding. The total will be $52 million this year compared to $43 million the year before and $34 million in the 2020's budget. So we have made great strides in funding and stabilizing the pension fund. Managed assets represents the expense side of getting back to the pre-pandemic levels and some cost increases within their operations. Both the other non-personnel and contractual services increases represents a mix of increased costs, once again due to ramping up to normal operations, as well as expected increases in certain items such as gasoline for our fleet, materials and supplies, and some other items related to telecom and IT. Lastly, the last item is the debt service, which is going down by $3.9 million. As you may recall, the Board approved two bond transactions in the recent months, and we refunded multiple bond series and generated net present value savings of over $29 million. And so that portion, the $3.9 million, is the current-year portion of that reduction. I'll turn it back over to the interim Superintendent to make some closing remarks.
Thank you, Steve. In closing, I would just like to thank President Ava Slavell and the entire Board for giving me the opportunity to present the 2022 budget. As evident from today's presentation, I am committed to keeping you informed. We want to make sure We want to make sure that all of you have the time to explore this budget. My team and I welcome any questions you have now, and we're, of course, available for your feedback to answer any questions or hold briefings with each of you over the coming weeks to ensure that you have all the information that you need. We face a pivotal moment in the Chicago Park District. I look forward to our continued uh, partnership and, and, and working closely together um, with all of you as we continue to make and work towards uh, this, making this organization all that it can be and, and so much more. Thank you all.
Thank you, Rosa, and um, it, this is an exciting time, actually, because the notion that you are starting to restore services back to pre-pandemic levels is something that people have really been looking forward to. And I think uh, it's also important to assure people that this is being done with every uh, consideration towards making sure that it's uh, safe and healthful and, and that people are absolutely protected in the environment that they're in, but that we're going to be expanding services for the Park District. Very exciting. Your budget represents your priorities. You know, it's always a reflection of your priorities. You put your money where your, your heart and your mind is. And so this is a good time for the Chicago Park District to be uh, moving back towards uh, being the robust service provider that it has always been. So at this time, we will open the hearing for public discussion. So will the secretary please call the names of those who have signed up to speak?
Of course. We ask that you please limit your comments to two minutes. We also have that those making comments before the board, please lower your electronic devices, including television, so that we may hear you clearly and do not experience any frequency interference. We have four speakers who have signed up to speak. Louise McCurry, May Toy, Leslie Rec, and Levante Stewart. We'll get our first speaker on the line, Louise McCurry. Hi, is this Louise?
This is Louise.
Hi, good morning. You are live at the Chicago Park District Budget Hearing. You may present your comments to the board now.
Good morning. Thank you. Good morning, Board and Superintendent Escorino. Thank you so much for the honor of being able to address you today. Uh, since we submitted our request for budget items for the budget this year, we've had one more thing occur that wanted to add to our request and hope it gets included. Uh, in addition to needing, really needing a new gymnasium uh, or having a car while repaired so that the leaking stops, we have this wonderful jewel in the Chicago Park District in Jackson Park called the Garden of the Phoenix. And the Garden of the Phoenix has increased since March of this year from having five-hundred visitors a day to almost eight-thousand visitors a day during the Cherry Blossom Festival, where people lined up from morning to night. The results of that are that, in fact, it was a great oasis for people during the COVID pandemic, and it's now showing the results of lots and lots of people coming into the island. The entryway to the island, the two north and south bridges, the paint along the bridges is now gone and rusting is beginning to happen. And some unfortunate folks have been chipping away at the concrete in the base of the bridge, and so there are now holes in the bridge where children can put their feet through. So we would like to add that to our request for budget changes this year because it's now an area where the public that comes and enjoys the huge numbers of families, the people who line up morning to night to enjoy uh, have a really negative impression of the garden because the bridges look so bad and can put their feet through the bridge if they're, as they're. I thank you for giving me the extra time to raise these because these are the things that have basically come to our, our attention as we've had more and more people from there this spring. I am done. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Louise. We'll release you from the call now, and you can rejoin the meeting through one of the links provided. We'll get our next speaker on the line, May Toy. And please let the record reflect that May has submitted supporting documentation, which you may find in your board packets.
First, let me say welcome back, May. Is she on the line?
I don't think she's on quite yet. It's ringing.
Sarah, we'll go on and come back to May if we can do that.
Okay. I just sent her a message, so I know she's there. I can try her from my phone really quick, too.
Okay.
She just messaged.
We have May on the line.
Oh, great. Hi, is this May?
Yes, this is May.
There you are. Hi, May.
Thank you.
We're very glad to have you back.
Yeah.
You are live at the Park District Budget Hearing, and you may present your comments to the board now.
Thank you. Um, my name is May Toy, and I'm president of Skinner Park Advisory Council. I want to take this opportunity to thank um, Pat LeBaron, Tiffany Southstrom, and she's all. Um, the comments are which is going to be a lot of help today, uh, this year. I especially want to thank Rob Arlo and Brianna Heath and Tom Smith. Well, because when I have my accidents, they immediately reach out to me and wish me well and ask if they could help address any outstanding issues. I want to say that this, this type of compassion that helps that really emphasizes the way that partners are going to come between um, the communities to ensure that our, that our relationship. Um, I also want to take this opportunity to talk about how I think some equal but inadequate policies within the Park District. And I want to advocate in general and not specifically for Skinner Park or, or St. Back in particular. The community garden program is a very important one because we've been part of for almost twenty years. But part of the problem is that the Park District provides land for no funding. So all burden is basically placed on to community members to basically pay for a reasonable installation, plants, and maintenance going forward. And I believe very strongly that every park deserves to have beautiful, safe parks because they're a source of pride for the community. But while edible gardens have a way to fund themselves because they charge a fee per pot, ornamental gardens do not.
Twenty seconds remaining.
Thanks. And so you see in the packet, there's a disparity where basically self and what communities cannot afford to be in a community garden program. Now, I'm asking that you provide funding in these communities to help them basically create community gardens. Then my last point is about the Park of I G Council Live Ode Insurance.
Please make a closing remark.
That's basically addresses, I think, uh, same inequity problems. So you can read it for yourself, and um, thank you for this opportunity. Thank you.
I, I have a question for May. Uh, May, can you tell me about how much money your community members spend each season on the garden that they do? When it's not a vegetable garden that pays for itself, when it's a flower garden or a natural garden, about how much do they spend?
We have the trinkle garden, which is a large ornamental garden. I think we have one of the largest ones in the park district system. And it's about half an acre. And so we basically spend between three to four thousand dollars a year. And so that's far on the high side, but we also put a lot of sweat equity into it.
Sure.
Not every community has to spend that amount of money. I don't think the park district has to put in, you know, like three to four thousand dollars per garden. But I think that if you gave community gardens, the community the opportunity to plant flowers, they could grow this over time. We grew our garden, you know, over years of help. And I think that's really what I'm asking and advocating for because I also work with the Chicago Community Gardeners Association. And we provide a lot of plants, you know, all, all for free, at very low costs to gardeners. But what I'm saying is that it is very helpful and the park district can provide support and funding to help these parks and these communities. You know, I think it creates a better relationship between the park district and the community that you basically create that the parks are beautiful, you know, and it, it gives them a sense of ownership. You know, I, I believe very strongly that communities should have ownership, you know, in their parks. They should care for it, and it's something I passionately believe in. You know, so you guys can, I can help you, you guys with the budget. I mean, I'm a policy analyst by trade. You know, I do this for a living. So I'm more than happy to help, you know, New York, for example. They fund every single community garden that they have the basic necessities between plants, soil, and everything they do. But they do it through a block grant from the federal government. I think that the park should constantly do this through block grant money. You know, I think that there's ways to fund this, to make it more affordable. You can invest it to income, you know, by neighborhood level. Would you basically distribute money at a higher level to lower-income communities, you know, and less so? I believe that this creates a better part, furniture feel, you know, between the park district and the community.
I agree. I agree. And I think that the fact that you put so much sweat equity into it, uh, that has value, but you shouldn't have to, to subsidize the Park District three-thousand dollars for your community garden. So Rosa, uh, May Toy is a longtime strong advocate of the parks in her community and the parks in general. And I'm sure that she will, now that she's back, and welcome back, May. Now that you're back, I'm sure you and Rosa will see a lot of each other. But you have a strong ally. Thank you, May.
Looking forward to it.
Mm-hmm.
Great. Thank you, May. We'll release you from the call, and you can rejoin the meeting through one of the links provided. And we'll get our next speaker on the line, Leslie Rec. And for the record, Leslie has submitted supporting documentation, which you may also find in your packet.
Hello.
Good morning. Is this Leslie?
It is.
Hi, Leslie. You are live at the Chicago Park District Budget Hearing, and you may present your comments to the board now.
Thank you very much. This is Leslie Rec. I'm the president of the Grant Park Advisory Council. And Superintendent Escorino and board members, we really appreciate this opportunity to present our ideas. We submitted a statement which was in detail. Grant Park is the town square of Chicago, and our concern is that the balance between the citywide events and the neighborhood uses of Grant Park have not been reasonably balanced for many years. There's a lot of damage in the park that's been done, especially by large events like Lala and the marathon, many things. And the damage is extensive and has not been repaired. Things like trucks driving down sidewalks that were never meant for that, tennis courts being used for parking trucks. We're asking for the Park District to establish, for the first time, a capital fund to do major repairs in Grant Parks that are long needed. We also are asking that we work with the Park District to find other sources of funding going to our representatives and working with Park District uh, representatives. We have a large need for our dog-friendly area to be brought up to speed. It hasn't been for, for many years. We're working on many aspects of the park, and one is working on the new framework plan, or at least revising the two-thousand-and-two framework plan. The Park District just issued an RFP for a consultant, and we're looking forward.
Twenty seconds remaining.
The main piece of that is that we have the city, as well as all of the other representatives, working together. We're also very concerned about the price increases in the fees in Maggie Daley Park. MBRE has gotten huge increases in their funding.
Please make your closing remarks.
Last year and one-hundred-and-thirty this year, they've increased the skating fees extremely high, and we really want that to be looked into. They won't give us any breakdown of why they're doing what they're doing. And the final item is we want to make sure that we work with the Park District. And Superintendent Escorino, we would love to meet with you and continue to meet with Park District representatives because there are so many issues in Grant Park that need immediate work. And we feel we've gotten great cooperation in the past, but unfortunately, we've got positions that are open in, you know, in the um, Maggie Daley Field House that haven't been filled. They were listed for interviews and then taken down. So it's a cruel joke to say that you've got a certain head pound for the neighborhood and for programs in Grant Park.
Please make your closing remarks.
But not to provide the personnel that we need. Thank you very much.
Thank you. And Leslie, look forward to scheduling a meeting to hear all the concerns. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Leslie. We'll release you from the call, and you may rejoin the meeting through one of the links provided. We'll get our last speaker for the public budget hearing on the line, Levante Stewart.
Hello.
Good afternoon. Is this Levante?
Hello, good to be here.
Can you hear me all right?
Yes, I can hear you.
Okay, great. You are live at the Chicago Park District Budget Hearing. You may present your comments to the board now.
Good morning, Board. I'm Levante Stewart Singer. I'm the president of Rosewood Park Advisory Council. I wanted to speak with you on the record for three points of work. The thing is that we would like to appeal to you regarding the budget that it changed on a playground. Thereby being able to, if there would be more funds in the budget for program and for that.
Levante, you're breaking up just a little bit. Are you still with us? Jimmy, so let's give him one more ring.
He actually said that he had to go, and he hung up abruptly, so. I'm not so sure we should call back.
Okay.
All right, well. He'll have another opportunity on December first.
Yes, and actually Levante has also signed up to speak at the board meeting, so we'll give him another ring later. Um, and that was our final speaker.
Okay. All right. Now, those are our four speakers. All public comments have been received. Do any of the commissioners wish to, wish to make any further comments on the budget? Okay, that concludes the public hearing. May I have a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Thank you. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
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 All in favor, motion carries. That concludes the public hearing. The meeting is adjourned. So now we move to our regular board meeting. Since we have recited the Pledge of Allegiance earlier, we can move on with the rest of the meeting. On this day, Wednesday, November tenth, twenty-twenty-one, at twelve oh five PM, the regular board meeting of the Chicago Park District is being held remotely in an effort to protect the public's health and in adherence with Senate Bill twenty-one thirty-five, Article fifteen, Section fifteen-five, the amended Open Meetings Act, five Illinois CS one-twenty, Section seven, subsection E four, and then continued observance of the governor's orders pursuant to COVID-nineteen Executive Order Number ninety-two and the gubernatorial disaster proclamation filed on October fifteenth, twenty-twenty-one. As such, the district has deemed it necessary to continue to hold its meetings virtually. Will the secretary please take a roll call of the commissioners?
Yes. Commissioner Edwards?
Here.
Commissioner Netski?
Here.
Commissioner Munoz?
Here.
Commissioner Hamilton?
Here.
Commissioner Vae?
Here.
Vice President King?
Here.
And President Lavelle?
Here.
Quorum is present. Let the record reflect that interim general superintendent and CEO, Rosa Escorino, is also in attendance.
Thank you. This meeting will please come to order. Before we get started, please be advised that the December Board Meeting will be held on December first, twenty-twenty-one, at eleven-thirty AM. Please mark your calendars as such. First on the agenda under general business, there is the Certificate of Publication of the Notice of the Chicago Park District Public Budget Hearing, which was held on November tenth, twenty-twenty-one, at eleven twenty AM, and the Notice of the Release of the twenty-twenty-two Chicago Park District Budget Recommendations for Public Inspection. This please be marked as received and filed by the secretary. Next, under general business, certificate of filing of the twenty-twenty-one annual tax. Next, under general business, Certificate of Filing of the 2021 Annual Tax Levy with the Clerks of Cook and DuPage Counties. Will this also be marked as received and filed by the secretary? Then under general business is the appointment of a trustee to the Park Employees' Annuity and Benefit Fund of Chicago. Per Illinois Statute 40, Illinois CS 512156 of the Illinois Pension Code, three members of the board are appointed by the Park District Board. I hereby nominate Cynthia Evangelista to serve on the pension board for a term of three years, ending June 30th, 2024. Are there other nominations or discussions from commissioners? Hearing none, then may I have a motion?
So moved.
Second, is there a second?
Okay.
Thank you. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Are there any against? Hearing none, motion carries. Cynthia Evangelista is hereby our representative on the Parks Employees' Annuity and Benefit Fund of Chicago for a term of three years. Next is approval of the meeting minutes from the special board meeting held on October 8th, 2021, and the regular board meeting held on October 13th, I'm sorry, 2021. Is there a motion for approval of the minute meetings? Meeting minutes. Thank you. A second? Will the secretary please take a roll call for the adoption of this matter?
Of course. Commissioner Edwards?
Here.
Commissioner Netski?
Aye.
Commissioner Munoz?
Aye.
Commissioner Hamilton?
Aye.
Commissioner Vae?
Aye.
Vice President King?
Aye.
And President Lavelle?
Aye.
Motion carried, and the minutes are adopted.
Thank you. Under acknowledging excellence and update on improvements at Big Marsh Park and the opening of the Ford Calumet Environmental Center. This is my favorite part of the program.
Thank you, President Lavelle. Thank you, the board and Superintendent Escareño. Thanks for the time and listening to our presentation about Big Marsh and the Ford Calumet Environmental Center. I'm Matt Freer. I'm Assistant Director in Natural Resources. I oversee the park district's environmental conservation and engagement unit. And joining me on this presentation is Paul Fitzgerald, who's the Executive Director of Friends of Big Marsh. Next slide, please. So our team, the Environmental Conservation Engagement Team, is dedicated to promoting and enhancing diverse natural areas, welcoming people to connect and understand and enjoy these vital urban natural spaces, together building resilient, healthy ecosystems for communities and for future generations of Chicagoans, which we referred to early in Superintendent Escareño's presentation. Just to orient you a little bit, for those that haven't been there, Big Marsh is sort of the hub of our southeast side natural areas you see highlighted in green here. We have over 600 acres of natural areas on the southeast side of Chicago, with the Ford Calumet Environmental Center being the hub of activity for exploration of all those areas. Next slide, please. Big Marsh is 278 acres. It's built on slag, but hosts a prairie savanna wetland and 35-acre bike park. There are three miles of single track, two world-class pump tracks, and three BMX jump lines. Other assets include bird watching, nature hikes, nature play, and of course, the new environmental center. All of our natural areas, but especially Big Marsh, provides a host of benefits for humans. You know, you see the ecosystem services provided here on the left-hand side, the human health benefits here on the right-hand side. In addition, there's a myriad of benefits for threatened and globally endangered species in the area. So there are many species that call Big Marsh home that aren't found anywhere else in the world, which we're very excited about. Next slide, please. A little bit about the site history. What you see here, this image on the screen, there is a train running along the east side of Big Marsh. That train line still exists, managed by Norfolk Southern Railroad. The train was actually dumping slag right into Big Marsh. So that is a brief history of what was once Big Marsh. In the 80s, it was going to be used as a landfill, but the city of Chicago put a moratorium on any further landfill development. So essentially, it sat vacant for about 30 years until 2011, when the park district took over ownership from the city of Chicago as the Department of Environment was phased out. It soon became Park 564. Next slide, please. Since the park district has taken over in 2014, we went through a feasibility study that located the environmental center at Big Marsh. In 2015, we started restoration in earnest with over $5 million received to date in outside grant funds. In 2016, Big Marsh officially opened, with the park district hired full-time staff to manage the site and programming. In 2017, we received an award along with our landscape architect Hitchcock for restoration and design. Last year, we built the two world-class pump tracks. This year, a lot of exciting things happening. Last Monday, we cut a ribbon on the Ford Calumet Environmental Center. We've kicked off the OzLab construction, which I will highlight in a moment. And actually, just today, we kicked off our Big Hill construction, building another wonderful bike amenity at the park. So here's an overview of our OzLab construction. This is a million-dollar grant received last year. This creates over three miles of accessible trail that connects the entire 278 acres of the park, builds camping platforms, shade structure, and a hub for our natural areas restoration crews. Next slide, please. All of this work would not be possible without a lot of our wonderful partners. Student Conservation Association worked on job training with us at Big Marsh, not only for restoration work, but also for bikes and bike maintenance. Autobahn Great Lakes and the Chicago Ornithological Society helping us monitor birds to track those threatened and endangered species I referenced earlier. Working with Chicago Public Schools and Envision Unlimited to bring students and adults with varied disabilities to recreation programs at Big Marsh and other southeast side natural areas. And of course, Friends of Big Marsh, our nonprofit partner. And I'd like to introduce Paul Fitzgerald, who is the Executive Director of Friends of Big Marsh.
Hello.
Hello. We can hear you. Go ahead. Oh, Paul, I think you just got muted again.
Can you unmute yourself?
There you are. Go ahead.
Hey, thank you, Matt and commissioners. Is it working?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, good. There's a little bit of lag on my, I kind of seems like. Well, again, thanks, Matt. And my name is Paul Fitzgerald. I'm the Executive Director of Friends of Big Marsh. Friends of Big Marsh is a 501(c)(3) nonprofit that was founded in 2015 by folks who are involved with SRAM and REI to really directly support the work of the Chicago Park District at Big Marsh Park. Particularly in the early years, the organization was largely focused on fundraising and bike park development. Those are still two of our three main projects with Friends of Big Marsh. The third is community engagement. Really, in 2018, we pivoted to be more of a locally-based nonprofit organization, a community-focused nonprofit organization. To that end, in 2021, you could really see the way, as sort of the bike experts that we hosted some events. Those include our now four-year annual short track race series, the Half-Acre Cycle Cross Eliminator, Birds, Bikes and Beats, which had its fourth year this year as well, which is a celebration of everything that makes Big Marsh amazing. You know, the birding opportunities, the biking opportunities, and also our bike convergences, where we start bike rides in the surrounding communities of Eastside, Pullman, Hegwisch, Riverdale, and South Dearing, and we bring the community out to Big Marsh. So I think that, and also to that end, this year, we entered a lease agreement with UCG in the Chicago Park District, where we're actually running a bike rental facility at the Ford Calumet Environmental Center. So it's staffed, we have bikes, and really the focus of that is to, again, to invite the community to the bike park and really explore all 278 acres of the park. You know, we focus on these bikes not only being available for the general public, you know, for rent, but also the partners that Matt mentioned in the previous slide. Everybody from Envision Unlimited to Chicago Adventure Therapy. You can move forward, it's okay. But we had these groups coming out, some of them multiple times a week, to bring young people, adults with different abilities, all types of different folks out to enjoy Chicago's first bike park. If you want to advance this slide, please. So in 2022, Friends of Big Marsh has really focused on trails and connections. You know, we're building these trails to facilitate the connections, right? So Matt just mentioned, I'm really excited and I'm proud that today was the first construction meeting for what we call the Big Hill. You can see the Big Hill in the exact center of this photo. It's sort of that blank canvas that you could see between our asphalt pump tracks and our jump line hill. And this is the last major project of the bike park. So in the next month, it sounds like, whether dependent on construction, dependent on weather, we are grading this hill. We're going to see it capped and ready for bike trails in the future. As everybody knows, Chicago is very flat, so it's exciting to have a hill to put bike paths on. As a South Sider, it's also exciting to have a hill that may be available if we get snow in the next couple winters as a sledding hill, but I can only wish. We also have been involved heavily with the steering committee for the Lake Calumet Bike Trail. I chose this photo because on the top 20% of it, you could actually see the land between the northern hammerhead of Lake Calumet and the square marsh. That's really the place that they're focused on, this bike path. This path will connect Big Marsh Park to the Pullman National Monument District in Roslyn. This, you could, if you're interested, you could really check out the feasibility study at actitrans.org/lakecalumettrail. And just recently, Friends of Big Marsh was also awarded a grant from Invest in Cook to pursue a feasibility study that would connect Big Marsh to Indian Ridge Marsh via 116th and Torrance. So again, this opportunity to build this huge site happened because so much of this land was really connecting industry, but we're excited to connect the communities. Thank you very much. And finally, the next spring is going to be awesome at Big Marsh, so please come by. We have bikes for you at the outfitter space.
It's beautiful. Thank you.
I agree. Thank you for the presentation. If you haven't been out there, I highly recommend it. I was lucky enough to get a tour. Paul actually gave my daughter and I a tour on a bike at one point, so a beautiful space.
Thank you. Also, under acknowledging excellence, we have more excellence to acknowledge. We are honoring the 72nd Annual Junior Bears Mumble Champions, the LaFollette Park Wildcats. We also commend and give our congratulations to the runners-up, the Limbloom Park Ravens. We have a presentation?
Yes, and for the folks from our community rec group, if you want to go ahead and unmute yourself and turn your cameras on.
Hello. Good afternoon. First, I would like to thank President Lavelle, the board of commissioners, and interim Superintendent Escareño for inviting us to the meeting today. My name is Roberto Lugo Jr., and I have been the Junior Bear Commissioner for the last 10 seasons. Junior Bear Football, which just completed its 72nd season, is a free tackle football program run by the Chicago Park District staff at 18 locations across the city of Chicago. The program features an eight-to-10-year-old division with 120-pound maximum weight and an 11-13-year-old division with a maximum weight of 140 pounds. All head coaches are Chicago Park District staff, with the rest of the coaching staffs being made up of a combination of Chicago Park District staff and volunteers. All coaches complete USA Football's Youth Tackle Certification yearly to ensure they are aware of the latest best practices when it comes to coaching youth football. Junior Bear Football typically has nearly, near 1,000 participants, including players and cheerleaders. Junior Bear Football is free for participants, including uniforms, equipment, transportation to and from games, postseason awards, and a postseason awards banquet. Junior Bear Football gets about half of its funding thanks to a grant from Bears Care. Participants are regularly invited to participate in various Chicago Bears activities like games, clinics, and special events, providing unique experiences for our participants. Junior Bear Football's championship game, which happened this past Friday, the Mumble is played annually at Soldier Field, giving players and fans a unique, once-in-a-lifetime opportunity. Many of Junior Bear Football's former players are currently playing at successful Chicagoland high school football programs like Phillips High School, Simeon High School, De La Salle Institute, Kenwood, Langtech, St. Lawrence, and many others. Several alumni have gone on to play college football, with some over the years making it to the ranks of the NFL. Last Friday night, the LaFollette Park Wildcats were crowned the Junior Bear Football Champions by winning the 72nd Annual Mumble at Soldier Field. LaFollette Park played Limbloom Park and won the game by a score of 30 to 13. LaFollette Park, from Chicago's Austin neighborhood, is led by head coach James Bailey, with help from his assistant coaches Jaquez Bailey, Taishan Bailey, and William Terry, who are all Junior Bear Football and LaFollette Park Wildcats alumni. This is LaFollette Park's second championship in the last four years.
You know, I think what I like most about it is the legacy. That it just, there are people who, they played, they come back to coach, their kids play. It's an amazing program. Congratulations to both LaFollette Park and to Limbloom Park Ravens. Do other commissioners have comments?
Second, thank you. Congratulations and thank you for being here today.
Yeah, and then we do, just, we do have Coach Bailey in the presentation, so I don't know if Coach Bailey has any words for us.
Coach?
It's actually Coach James, we call him.
Well, you have your whole family in it with you.
I am in awe of where I am today. Thank you, guys. The only, one thing I could say is I know we were talking, and the community's support that we get from our programs is tremendous. The social skills that the kids learn when they're playing games, whether it's whether we're winning, whether we're losing, the life skills that they get from that is tremendous. And so I really, when I say I love the program, I love it. I would, I work for the park mainly for Junior Bear, but it's a great program. Thank you, guys.
Thank you so much for what you give to the program.
And President Lavelle, I may, again, these guys were out there working, and I'm just in awe of coming in and working at the park district for such a short time, of the amount of work and dedication of the staff at the park district. Just a huge applause to all of you, because I know that you are so committed to the kids, and thank you on behalf of the park district.
Thank you all for your service and congratulations. Absolutely. Absolutely. Okay, that's such a high note. Now we go to business.
Thank you all so much.
Thank you. Under the presentations from the departments, from the Director of New Business Development, we have an update on the Financial Assistance Fund campaign. Kelly Sheets?
Great. I hope this business can be inspiring. So hello, I'm Kelly Sheets, Director of New Business Development, and I'm here to give you an update on the Park Kids fundraising campaign that supports the Chicago Park District Financial Assistance Fund. Just to give you a background, obviously, one of our philosophies in the parks, you can move to the next slide, is when schools are out, parks are in. And this has obviously proven very necessary and impactful during these past few years for working families. And so the Park Kids are our kids initiative within the Financial Assistance Fund, really focuses on the out-of-school time, particularly the out-of-school time programs of Park Kids After School Program that runs fall, winter, and spring, and our summer day camp program that runs throughout the summer. The participants of those two programs are ages six to 12, and we have numerous locations all across the city. Most recently, Park Kids locations over 115 different locations across the city, and Summer Day Camp over 175 locations. We have always worked to be equitable and accessible, and I think you've heard this in some of the budget conversations. We have a history of having tiered pricing. We have a history of having tiered pricing structure that makes programs affordable by local community. So different parks in different areas of the city have different pricing in order to make the programs equitable and accessible to people in those community areas. And hands down, all over the place, we do not turn a child away for an inability to pay. And that's where our Financial Assistance Fund comes into play. The purpose of it is to provide financial assistance to qualifying families and to make out-of-school time programs available to all children, regardless of their financial situation. The funding for the fund comes from our annual fundraising campaign, which we just launched in 2018. And then the balance of the funds needed to provide this support is part of our annual operating budget. So it's supported by the annual operating budget, which was mentioned earlier. Just to show you the results to date historically, like I said, we started actively fundraising from individuals and companies in 2018 for this specific cause. If anyone saw some of that early on, you might have noticed Send a Kid to Camp. Well, Send a Kid to Camp has now kind of evolved into Park Kids Are Our Kids and a year-round annual fundraising campaign that supports these two programs that provide out-of-school time programming year-round. You can see from the numbers, financial aid recipients, the numbers have been higher in 2018 and 2019, and then you see the impact of the pandemic, and the pandemic impacted our total programming numbers. So as a result, less kids in the parks, less recipients. But our financial assistance, you can see the different amounts that have been given out. And again, that is directly based on how many participants are in the programs. But the amount raised has continued to go up. So in 2018, we launched, and we had success of raising $41,000 for our first year. Every year, we've increased a little bit. And this year, I'm happy to report that we've exceeded our initial $100,000 goal and are already at $113,000, with still Giving Tuesday and Year-End Giving ahead of us. So that's the main gist of what I wanted to go over. Basically, I'm here to encourage everyone, next slide, please, to support our kids in the parks. And to know that Giving Tuesday and Year-End Giving is coming up. Giving Tuesday is Tuesday, November 30th, so you'll be seeing a lot more from the Park District about this initiative. Individuals can donate online at www.chicagoparkdistrict.com/financialassistancefund. And just to give people an idea of, you know, how much should I give? What kind of impact do I make? By looking at our varied pricing across the city, we came to kind of what average costs might be. And to give you an idea that a $300 gift would be enough to fund a child in Park Kids, fall, winter, and spring, and then through Summer Day Camp. A gift of $175 would cover a Park Kids kid through fall, winter, and spring, so out-of-school time for the school year. And then for Summer Day Camp, sponsoring a day camp kid would be $125. Again, those are averages. And just so you're aware, those average prices are kind of in line with what our current pricing is, based on our COVID pricing and things like that. So basically, thank you for letting me speak and share this program. I encourage you, if you've not given yet, to support this tremendous initiative that we have that allows us to do more for the children of Chicago and the families of Chicago. And either donate online, reach out to my office, the Office of Business Development, or share this with your friends and companies so that we can continue to grow this and continue to provide this years into the future. Thank you.
Thank you.
I have a quick question.
Yep.
What's the age group? The age?
It's ages six to 12.
Six to 12. Thank you.
And just to clarify for folks who might be listening, it's not just for Giving Tuesday, right? They can give year-round using the link?
Yes, it's a year-round annual campaign.
Well, what was your goal for this year, and how close are you?
So our goal was 100,000, and just last week, we exceeded that, and are at 113,000. So my new goal is 125,000. I always push my team to keep going.
Good, 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 good.
Could you please have that link sent to Sarah or Bryce so that all the commissioners could have it in an email to be able to make a donation? And I would encourage all of my fellow commissioners, if you haven't already, supported the program to do so prior to the end of the year for the tax benefits, also for the benefit of the Park District.
And could you put that in the chat, in case any of our participants at home would like to contribute?
Yes, definitely. Thank you.
Thank you. And just one final point, Kelly, we're going to be doing PSA so that we can continue to push this message through to the end. So we'll make sure that you guys get the link to the PSA, which I'm supposed to be doing in the next day or so.
Wonderful. All right, next, under Communications and Reports, we have a news section that we're adding just today as a space holder. It's Communications from the Board of Commissioners. We are adding this section to give commissioners a chance to comment or report out if there's something they want to speak to. If there are comments from commissioners today, we will take them here. If not, there's nothing to report. All right, so we move on. Next is--
You know, just want to say, President Lavelle just wanted to make sure we thank you and the rest of the team for adding this section, because I think it's really important to acknowledge that this section here is new to our meeting, and it's something that we're going to keep on going specifically, you know, as we're doing work throughout the parks. I think a lot of folks don't see the behind-the-scenes work that a lot of our commissioners are doing, and the time that we're spending working on different things. Because, you know, we have this one meeting once a month, and then separately, we should be doing things with parks, and it's important to have space to be able to report out and talk about these issues and the work that's happening.
And there will be a lot of work that will be happening here, so there'll be a lot to report on. Thank you. Next. And will the secretary please call the names of those who have signed up to speak?
Absolutely. We ask that you please limit your comments to two minutes. We also ask that those making comments before the board, please lower your electronic devices, including television, so that we may hear you clearly and do not experience frequency interference. Our first three speakers who have signed up to speak are Jessica Fuentes, Jeannie Jong, and Barbara Cooley. We'll get our first speaker on the line, Jessica Fuentes.
Hello.
Hi, good afternoon. Is this Jessica?
This is.
You are live at the Chicago Park District Board Meeting, and you may present your comments to the board now.
Awesome. Well, good afternoon. I want to thank President Lavelle, Vice President King, and all Board Commission members for allowing me to speak here today. I've been compelled to speak here at the Board of Commissioners due to our inability to resolve the issues of defamation, inappropriate use of Humble Park Advisory Council titles, and the inability to facilitate respectful and work-focused meetings monthly, whether those have been in person or virtually. In September, the Humble Park Advisory Council had its first virtual PAC meeting, where the Vice President of the Humble Park Advisory Council showed up within the last 10 minutes of the meeting, in which he spent disrespecting all members and calling me out of my name for questioning why he was allowed to go on an unprofessional and inappropriate right at the tail end of a meeting he was not present for. The last two meetings have been recorded through Zoom. I ask all of you all to request the footage of those meetings to witness the disrespect, favoritism, and politicking that has taken place in those settings. It has been quite difficult as member and as a leader of the community who has been doing work around community building, affordable housing, and also the access, equitable access to the park to be treated this way by executive members. Yesterday, on November 9th, there was a stream of Facebook posts posted on the Humble Park Advisory Council page, which I also urge all of you all to take a look at, that continues to publish accusations that are not rooted in fact, that seek to ruin the reputation of community organizations and leaders that have been doing work in this community for multiple decades. It has been irresponsible by the executive board members of the Humble Park Advisory Councils continuing to utilize--
10 seconds remaining.
--and their titles to continue to try to ruin individual reputations. I hope that at the next meeting, board members can attend and witness some of the things that many of us are concerned with. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Jessica. We'll release you from the call, and you may rejoin the meeting through one of the links provided. And we'll get our next speaker on the line, Jeannie Jong. And for the record, Jeannie has submitted supporting documentation, which you may find in your packets.
Hello, this is Jeannie.
Hi, is this Jeannie?
Yes, this is Jeannie.
Hi, good afternoon. You are live at the Chicago Park District Board Meeting, and you may present your comments to the board now.
Good afternoon, Commissioners and Superintendent Escareño. My name is Jeannie Jong, and I'm a Humble Park Advisory Council member. I am speaking today on behalf of myself and 20 members of our advisory council. We would like to document that we are dismayed by the negative and disparaging statements made at the November 2nd board meeting by the current Advisory Council President. That statement is one of many defamatory remarks, personal attacks, and complaints the president has made against PAC members and Park District staff. We are especially dismayed at the defamation of lifelong Humble Park resident Maggie Martinez, who has been a Humble Park Advisory Council member for over 25 years. She has received numerous awards and recognition for her service and dedication to the community. For the public record, the accusation related to financial discrepancies is incorrect. The $15,000 mentioned by the president was properly transferred to the Humble Park account of the Chicago Park District at the request of the donor. The money is allocated to Humble Park voting. Current board members were notified and given documentation of this, yet they continue to move accusations. We have consistently experienced and observed the current president and board actively scuffle and restrict community input and engagement. They have created a hostile and unwelcoming environment, and this has negatively impacted our community. We request the Park District an immediate oversight of the president and current board. We request the Park District ensure that member attendance is counted, that voting procedures are fair and transparent, and that the Advisory Council is open and accessible to all community members. We believe strongly that the role of the Advisory Council is to work in partnership with the Park District and engage community members in a productive and positive manner. We'd also like to state that we support our Park District Supervisor Jesus Perez and our very manager, Akal Malanado.
10 seconds remaining.
For their support, our community and their dedication to our park. I'm a mom of two young boys, and we are in Humble Park almost every day. We have a beautiful and well-maintained park that is a place for our community to come together. Really thank you for your service, and I thank you for giving me the opportunity to speak today.
Thank you so much, Jeannie. We'll release you from the call now, and you may rejoin the link through one of the links provided.
Before we move on, let me say that periodically, there are Park Advisory Councils that seem to have a great deal of dissension and problems. This is probably one of those that has a long history of problems. There's been a lot of intervention here. There have even been matters here that have been referred to the Inspector General. And there are some recommendations that are being made with respect to how this Park Advisory Committee should move forward. There are some real problems here. There have been some real instances of disrespect publicly to Park Advisory Committee members, and some instances of failure to comply with the rules and regulations that govern how a Park Advisory Council is supposed to operate. So these are matters that will come to the administration or have come to the administration now. And you'll have to make some decisions about whether or not this Park Advisory Commission, as currently comprised, will continue to operate.
Thank you, President. Yes, I'm going to be discussing this issue further internally. I think what is very much needed here is clear and open communication in terms of the facts. And so I look forward to that engagement with members of the PAC, as well as looking at the recommendations by the AIG. It is my preliminary understanding that, again, I will just, I will stay with my comments until I have more information, but I think clearer information and communication is needed.
Absolutely. Thank you both. Sarah, we can go on.
Okay, great. We'll get our next speaker on the line, Barbara Cooley. Hello, is this Barbara?
Yes, it is.
Hi, Barbara, this is Sarah Gelder. You are live at the Chicago Park District Board Meeting. You may present your comments to the board now.
Thank you. Good morning, or actually, good afternoon, everyone. Thank you for giving me the opportunity to speak again at the board meeting. I was able to speak at the September meeting, and as a result of that, I want to thank Richardson and Renee Shepherd Oons for coming out to address one of our issues with our landscaping. However, we still have two other issues that were not addressed at that time. One was the resurfacing of our tennis courts, playground, and basketball courts. And the other is a long overdue parking lot that we were supposed to have received as part of the three-day capital development project that was actually announced at a 2007 press conference in front of the old Seal House. It was supposed to comprise the Seal House, which we got in 2009, and the playground, which we also got in 2009. But the parking lot was supposed to have been completed in 2010. But a lot of the members of the State Park District, as well as Mayor Bailey, as well as Marlo Colvin, at that time, state representatives, are no longer in the positions that they were in, and it seems that no one seems to remember this. But it was part of the capital development program, and the press conference that was held was on July the 5th, 2007. So probably, if you look into your archives, you will probably find that capital development project. And hopefully, we can, because it's long overdue.
20 seconds remaining.
Yes. So again, I thank you for the opportunity to speak again, and I am hoping that someone will look into that capital development project, and we can go forward in the future. Thank you so much.
Thanks so much, Barbara. We'll release you from the call, and you may rejoin the meeting through one of the links provided. Our next three speakers who have signed up to speak are Judy Dever, Rebecca Wolfram, and Andre Gordio. We'll get our next speaker on the line.
Hello, Judy.
Hi, is this Judy?
Yes.
Hi, good afternoon. You are live at the Chicago Park District Board Meeting. You may present your comments to the board now.
Thank you, Commissioners. I'm a 77-year-old regular swimmer, had a handful of pools on the near South Side. I'm grateful for what the district has to offer all of us, and I'm grateful to those employees that are absolutely in need of patience. I'm also very happy to hear that there's a place up at beaches and pool. This is what I bring to the table today. I have this success. I have collected through my activism in the district 30 years of anecdotal records about my failures to successfully deal with supervisory personnel and some of the difficulties with the city. And what I'm asking for in the near future, when things settle down, truly, to find new director of beaches and pools, new pools, one of the nasty ones. And when all of the new players are in the business, I'm offering two 40-minute listening sessions, and a break provided in between at any quiet seating room in any part of this Seal House nearby. Now, I'll provide a few anecdotal records only every hired teacher appreciates value of anecdotal records. I'm a little nervous that my colleagues will see them this day after I test my capacity. And what else can I say? That's about it. Oh, I'm not providing the information in writing because my guess is it would go in the nearest way that surveys are elsewhere. the nearest west side that surveys are elsewhere. Thank you, and I hope you consider this. And the young woman that just put me on the phone has my phone number. And in the weeks and months ahead, I want to purchase the place as a low-fee pool user. And by the way, I have nothing criminal to report. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Judy. We will release you from the call now, and I do have your number on file.
And President Lavelle, I may, again, I just want to make sure, I couldn't understand everything that was being stated, but definitely want to just make sure that we reach out to the caller and happy to engage with her directly and hear her concerns and recommendations as part of everything that we're doing right now in relation to beaches and pools.
President Lavelle, you're muted.
Sorry. Part of what I thought I heard the caller recommend may be a very good idea, which is a listening session at some of the beaches and pool areas, or some of the fieldhouses are joining some of the beaches and pools, just to hear what patrons are experiencing and what they think about the practices of the lifeguards at the facilities that they frequent.
Absolutely. And just because this is coming up right now, I just want you to know that I'm already scheduling and planning listening sessions in the process.
Okay, great. Thank you.
Okay, we'll get our next speaker on the line, Rebecca Wolfram.
Hello?
Hi, good afternoon. Is this Rebecca?
Yes, it is. Can you hear me?
Yes, loud and clear. You're live at the Chicago Park District Board Meeting. You may present your comments to the board now.
Okay. Hello. I want to comment on the use of Douglas Park to host private for-profit festivals. If you're new to the board, you may not be as familiar with this issue, but we've had Riot Fest since 2015. We got a break for the pandemic, then this year we had two festivals, Summer Smash and Riot Fest. Most of you have heard, maybe even listened to, explanations of why this is so wrong. The horribleness of the festivals is one thing, disrupting traffic to two hospitals, the elimination of youth sports, extreme crowding of CPA trains and platforms resulting to death, what some have been referring to as an inconvenience. Besides and above all that, in my opinion, is the use of public space for private for-profit purposes. Respect engenders respect, contempt engenders contempt. Building a gigantic, impenetrable wall around a public park sends a clear message to the community. The message is not respectful. You are the appointed guardians of the public spaces. Do you really have more respect for the private entities that make huge piles of money and throw the park a bone than for the parks themselves, the communities, or your supposed ideals? Thank you.
10 seconds remaining.
Thank you, bye.
Thank you, Rebecca. We'll release you from the call and you can rejoin the meeting through one of the links provided. And we'll get our next speaker on the line, Andre Gordillo.
Hello, this is Andre.
Hi, Andre. We're getting a little background feed. If you could step away from the device you're watching the meeting on?
Yep.
Okay?
Yep, I can hear you.
Okay, great. You are live at the Chicago Park District Board Meeting. You may present your comments now. Go ahead.
Everybody. Hi, everyone. Can you hear me okay?
Yes.
I'd like to echo Rebecca's opinion there regarding private for-profit events in the Chicago Park District. My name is Andre. I'm a resident of Little Village in the 12th Ward. I spoke last month as well. We are still going through this pandemic. One of the few bright spots is that we've been able to pull the park almost daily and just, we appreciated the outdoor public spaces. However, this past year, there was two back-to-back music festivals in our park. And so for a full month, it was closed off, basically. These festivals claim to be an economic boon to the community, however, as Rebecca mentioned, there's been safety aspects that have been neglected. One person passed away on the Kedzie Pink Line. And so the park is really poorly positioned to handle the 120,000 people that attend, not to mention as well, the two safety unit hospitals, Mount Sinai and St. Anthony, are right next to the park. This park is situated in the zip code that's been hardest hit by COVID-19. And so when the park is blocked off, adjacent streets are blocked off, and it just makes it really hard for patients, staff, and ambulances to get through.
20 seconds remaining.
So I really ask for the Park District to consider moving the festival to a better centrally located location, like Grant Park or Soldier Field. Not only is public transit better there, but also security could be better. We both saw, I'm sure we all saw the locks of life in Houston with the Astral concerts and those reports of people sneaking into the VIP areas at Riot Fest and Summer.
Please make your closing remarks.
Like that here. Thank you.
I am sure that we all have some thoughts about concerts going forward, not that we want to prohibit concerts or anything on that order, but I think that the situation in Houston has probably raised for all of us some concerns to make sure that we are doing everything that we need to do to be focused on safety as well as entertainment at any of the festivals that we have in our Chicago parks. So I cannot tell you the fate of any particular park or any particular festival in a park. I can only tell you that I am certain that we will be looking closely at what is done in every festival to make sure that every eye is dotted and every two is crossed.
Thank you so much, Andre. We'll release you from the call and you may rejoin the meeting through one of the links provided. Our last three speakers for today are David Kostolansky, Carl Lewis, and Levante Stewart. And we'll get David on the line.
Hello?
Hi, is this Dave?
Yes.
Hi, good afternoon. You are live at the Chicago Park District Board Meeting. You may present your comments to the board now.
Okay.
And Dave, if you want to step away from the device you're watching the meeting on just so we don't get an echo.
Okay, a second.
Great, sounds good. Go ahead.
President Lavelle, Lieutenant Escareño, Board Directors, thank you for the opportunity to speak on behalf of Lakeshore Park and the community. I'd like to commend senior staff for their past efforts addressing playground safety and a new outdoor wellness area for adults. With the contractor working in the park, now is the time to complete elements of these projects and minimize cost. The elements back are honoring our financial commitments and regularly supplement outdoors, upkeep, and Lakeshore Park and Santa Parks working closely with DNR. And we maintain a large vibrant garden spending thousands of volunteer dollars each year. The last two months, I presented two main areas of concern. Pat Lavar and his team came out to see one of the serious significant issues, accessibility. Pat and his team concur with the work to be done. An area of danger must be fixed before the weather changes or we risk additional injuries. The community, our community includes a most densely populated area in the city and continues to grow, paying a high percentage of the city property taxes but has not received needed major updates while supporting parks throughout the city. Community members ask why the major issues of updating the facilities and programming have not been addressed. Programs need to be addressed to reflect the change in diversity and age that has occurred in this area over the last day. We've even presented an opportunity to fund a new fieldhouse without relying on city and park district funding, but never received a response from the past superintendent. There's a perception of our area being older Caucasian, wealthy individuals that needs to be updated. Not only is the community diverse.
20 seconds remaining.
The attract from around the city are very diverse in the participants served. The second issue that challenges our progress is that the PAC and perhaps other PACs are not included in the decisions and plans for the park and the advisory role we are assigned. PAC members and other members from the community live here and have years of knowledge of the park.
Please make your closing remarks.
Given the two-minute limit, I'll summarize our needs and further information as set in backup. Attention given to non-accessible fieldhouse, including possible replacement. Completion of related small projects to the playground and the new adult exercise area. Field attention beyond routine maintenance and increase in involvement and communication with the PAC. We'll continue to be a solid partner, but we do need to be considered as one by the Park District. I thank you and I apologize. I will be sending Sarah my comments, including that I didn't speak, and backup information today. Thank you.
Thank you, Dave. I'll look out for that. Okay, at this time, we'll release you from the call and you may rejoin the meeting through one of those links provided. And we'll get our next speaker on the line, Carl Lewis.
Hello?
Hi, good afternoon. Is this Carl?
Yes, it is.
Hi, Carl. You are live at the Chicago Park District Board Meeting. You may present your comments to the board now.
Thank you very much. And thank the board for having us. Just calling, my name is Carl Lewis, and President of the Brown Park Advisory Council. I'd be pleased to invite the Congress.
Carl, I think we may have lost you. Are you still there? Can you hear us all right?
I can hear you.
Okay, I think I can hear you now. Continue. Go ahead.
Okay, yes. So I would like to invite you to come to the uptick, but we do have a few problems. One, we need to be a line item in the park. The waiting parts are set up illegally. They were set up based on, you are a line item if you had a fieldhouse. We don't have a fieldhouse. We don't have anything. But what we do have is a lot of people coming to our park and wanting to utilize it. One of the things that we're doing right now is working with IIP to build a state-wide addition to our park. We also work with, and working with Microsoft right now, to not only develop that, but also develop our car in two H's smart park, which will eventually allow people to come in in the wintertime, sit at a table, and be just as comfortable as they would be in the summer. There are other ideas that we have discussed. The main thing that we have discussed is the security. So we've done quite a bit for what we want to do, but what we really do need is, one, a line item, two, a meeting place. We have no meeting place for our truck. We don't have a fieldhouse. We have nothing. We don't even have a kiosk to look in for it.
20 seconds remaining.
What we've done in what we have. We have, I want to mention this phone booth from IIP.
Levante Stewart. And this is the speaker who was cut off during the budget hearing earlier today. And we'll get Levante on the line. Hello, is this Levante?
This is.
Hi, you are live at the Chicago Park District Board Meeting. You may present your comments to the board now.
Thank you. Good afternoon, Board. And I try to begin from the budget hearing. Levante Stewart, Chairman, and the President of Rosen Blume Park Advisory Council, on behalf of our council. Three main points regarding our park. We'd like one of the records to go first.
Levante, really quick, you're breaking up just a little bit. I just want to make sure we can hear your points clearly.
Okay. So we want to protect our park status. We'd like to have it changed from a playground to a park, given the size and the amenities and the level of value of usage and number of programs and potential programs that can be run through our park. That also entails that we're looking for more staff, we provide more funds in the budget allocated for our park to increase the capacity of supervisor and personnel, hopefully render these services to the public. They're very much in demand. We're also asking for more funds that can be put into programming. The community has spoken to us through surveys and they want more programs, more expanded. This fieldhouse is embedded inside of a high school, and there's an entire empty high school sitting next door that the Chicago police are programming in, and there's plenty of room. We'd like for that to be considered to renegotiate space, and that also be allocated in the budget, to have additional space for programming and our park there. A hallway does just not serve the purpose. It is our whole purpose, meeting room and parking. That is not a fieldhouse. So we are requesting that you look into this whole high school space, which is owned by CPS, the former South Shore High School. So these are the things that we need to be looked at for Rosen Blume Park. So we've been doing it in advance and we will also, we completely request a write.
And Levante, you cut out just there at the end there. If you want to say that last sentence again.
Okay, sorry about my phone. We're saying that we will also submit this in writing.
Okay. Sounds great. Thank you. Okay, and that was our final speaker. Thank you, Levante. We'll release you from the call and you may rejoin the meeting through one of the links provided. Please also let the record reflect that we have received written testimonies from Carl Cunn, Mark Joseph, Magdalena Martinez, and Ada Lopez. I think we lost President Lavelle for just a second. Looks like she's getting back on. Give us one second and we will continue.
Okay, I'm back.
Okay, we're ready for you.
All right. Thank you to our speakers. Your comments have been received and the appropriate parties will be reaching out to you to address your concerns. We'll now proceed with the remaining agenda items for today. Under unfinished business, there's nothing to present, but first under new business from the Deputy Director of Revenue, authorization to enter into a concession permit with NAFSI LLC for the renovation and year-round operation of the restaurant space at the South Shore Cultural Center. Thank you. Hi, Shae Shae.
Okay. Good afternoon, President Lavelle, Commissioners and General Superintendent and CEO Escareño. My name is Shae Shae Taylor, and I am the Deputy Director of Revenue. Pursuant to the Code of the Chicago Park District, Chapter 9, I am here today to recommend that the General Superintendent and CEO, or her designate, enter into a concession permit agreement with NAFSI LLC for the renovation and year-round operation of the restaurant space at South Shore Cultural Center. This agreement would include the renovation and operation of the existing restaurant space that was formerly operated by City Colleges of Chicago and known as Parrot Cage Restaurant. The concessionaire was selected pursuant to a publicly advertised notice of availability, and no work may commence prior to the execution of a written concession permit agreement. The Park District is home to approximately 200 businesses that provide a variety of food and beverage offerings. innovative products at reasonable prices, great customer service, and memorable experiences that shape the culture of Chicago. In 2021, we were proud to introduce a new concession at the newly constructed South Shore Beach House. NAFSI will offer patrons additional dining options, making this a culinary destination. The Park District's agreement with City Colleges of Chicago for culinary school and restaurant space at Shore Cultural Center expires in 2022 and Parrot Cage Restaurant operations in 2019. The Park District requires the services of an experienced concessionaire to operate the restaurant in a manner that honors the legacy of South Shore Cultural Center and also its status as a Chicago historic landmark. The Department of Revenue publicly advertised this notice of availability on December 7th of 2020, and upon conclusion of reviewing the applications that were submitted in response to the NOA, NAFSI was recommended for award. NAFSI LLC proposes a plan that accentuates the beauty of the Mediterranean revival-style architecture, the vitality of the beach, and the soul of the neighborhood. It's often referred to as the Soul Coast, and NAFSI's meaning is soul in Arabic, Swahili, and other languages. The professionals at the helm of NAFSI each have a minimum of 10 years' experience in Chicago's flourishing hospitality industry. They have operated and managed a successful neighborhood restaurant, The Woodlawn, for five years. The restaurant has since become a staple in the Avalon Park community, and it offers a variety of menu options as well as amenities like an internet cafe, rooftop garden, and group yoga classes. The executive chef, I'm sorry, the restaurant manager, Chef Mike Old Digby, has over 15 years of experience managing food service with Eramark Compass Group. And the executive chef, Jonathan Glass, perfected his culinary school skills at Chance Restaurant in Hyde Park, where he developed menu items for 10 years. The proposed concession agreement with NAFSI will have a 10-year term. During this term, they propose to invest over $1.4 million in renovations to the restaurant space as well as the adjoining patio. The guaranteed revenue to the Park District in base fees is just over $1.25 million, and the MBE participation on this agreement is 100% from direct participation. Next slide, please. The design concept allows this landmark to maintain its traditional historic atmosphere, but it's also introducing features and furnishings that will propel the space into a modern oasis. The objective is to elevate the space with the interior design that is historically sensitive, culturally rich, and luxurious. Next slide, please. The restaurant design provides flexibility to accommodate both indoor and al fresco dining on the lakefront patio. The concept highlights coastal dining experiences and contributes to the goal of expanding outdoor dining opportunities, which is an important initiative for the city of Chicago as well as the Park District, both south and west. Next slide, please. NAFSI will feature a menu that will satisfy the desires of every diner. It ranges from casual American cuisine, things like salads and sliders, but it also has sophisticated menu options like Rack of Lamb and Serpenter. Restaurant goers, golfers, and lakefront trail users will be offered a plethora of options at a variety of price points for lunch and dinner on weekdays and will enjoy an expertly curated brunch on the weekend. Next slide, please. NAFSI LLC has the experience, capability, and personnel necessary to renovate and operate the restaurant at South Shore Cultural Center, and it is therefore in the best interest of the Chicago Park District to award NAFSI LLC the concession permit agreement for the renovation and year-round operation of the restaurant space at South Shore Cultural Center. And lastly, I'd like to acknowledge the founder and owner, Donnell Digby, who is in attendance today, and I am happy to take any questions, but before I do, next slide, please. While I have the opportunity, I want to remind the audience that we are currently accepting applications for the 2022 concession season and beyond. We're actually looking for concessionaire for Big Martis, was referenced earlier, and we're accepting applications for a new al fresco grant program to increase outdoor dining opportunities, which was made possible by the generous financial support from the city of Chicago. Applications can be found at parkconcessions.com and are due by November 22nd. Thank you so much for indulging me, and with that, are there any questions?
I do have some questions. Two things. One is, is there a patio behind the parrot cage now, or is that a build-out?
There is an existing patio behind the parrot cage. I believe it probably, at that time, had approximately eight patio tables with umbrellas. So, and the concessionaire has submitted concepts to update the space with some cabanas, and there is a potential expansion of that space, but nothing has been determined at this time.
And then the other thing is, the hours of operation, what are they envision compared to how infrequently the parrot cage seem to be open?
Well, you know, parrot cage was operated by city colleges and there were some constraints because it was a part of the education for the culinary school. I don't have the hours of operation right in front of me. However, I'm sure it would kind of correspond with the park hours. I do know that in the menu concepts that were submitted with the application, it included both lunch and dinner. Historically, Parrot Cage Restaurant was only open for dinner, so this would be open for longer hours, serving both lunch and dinner as well as brunch on Sundays.
Thank you. Are there other questions or concerns from other commissioners?
I just want to make a comment. I'm going to abstain from this vote out of abundance, out of an abundance of caution because Mr. Digby is a former student of mine, and, but I don't want anyone to think that my abstaining is in any way an indication of my lack of full confidence in Mr. Digby and the work that he's done at The Woodlawn and the work that he could potentially do on this project. He has my full support, but I will be abstaining.
And do we want to give Mr. Digby, who's hung in here with us for an extremely long time, if he's still here, to offer some of his work if you'd like?
Absolutely. It'd be nice to hear from him.
And Donald, you'll just need to unmute yourself, and you are free to turn your camera on as well. I just sent him a message. I'm not sure we still have him.
Yeah, I'm here. Can you guys hear me?
Yes.
We don't see you, but we can hear you.
There you are.
How are you guys? Mr. Digby, how you doing? Well, I want to thank you guys for the opportunity. We're excited. My family's excited. The community's excited about bringing a new restaurant offering to the South Shore community, and I think NAFSI would be a great addition, and thank you guys, and I wish you guys would give us your support.
Well, I can speak on behalf of the golfers at South Shore who are excited to have something of a nice concession to retire to for the 19th hole, so that'll be nice.
There you go.
And just hello again, while I was Commissioner at the city, kudos to all that you're doing business-wise, and so happy that you are expanding your business into the parks. So very exciting.
Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you. Congratulations to you, and we look forward to seeing you. Additional comments or questions? All right. Wonderful. Will the Secretary please, well, can I have a motion? Is there a motion to approve this?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Will the Secretary please take a roll call for the adoption of this matter?
Of course. Mr. Edwards?
Aye.
Commissioner Netsky?
Aye.
Mr. Munoz?
Aye.
Mr. Hamilton?
Aye.
Commissioner Vaye?
Aye.
And Vice President King, your abstaining?
Yes.
And President Lavelle?
Aye.
Motion carried and the matter is adopted. Congratulations.
Congratulations.
Thank you. Thank you. God bless you guys. Thank you.
As well.
Great, and good luck.
All right. Next, from the Director of Planning and Construction, we will consider authorization to enter into a contract with Terra Engineering Limited for Design and Construction Administration Services at Ronan Park, which is Park 275, specification number P16015-127.
Hi, Ed.
Hello. Good afternoon, Superintendent Escareño and members of the board. My name is Heather Gleason. I'm the Director of Planning and Development. It is recommended that the General Superintendent and CEO or her designee enter into a contract with Terra Engineering Limited for the purpose of providing design and construction administration services for the Chicago Park District. The contractor was selected pursuant to a request for proposals. The contract amount is not to exceed $526,404.39. If we could go to the next slide, Sarah, please.
Yes, one second. We're pulling it up.
Okay. Thank you. So Ronan Park is located at 3,000 West Argyle Street in the Albany Park community area. It's 12 acres in our north region in the 33rd Ward. If we could go to the next slide, show you a little bit of Ronan Park in total.
I believe I have the wrong presentation up. The Ronan one up. One second. Sorry for the delay.
It's okay. They're getting a preview of the next one.
Okay, let's see maybe. Okay, I think we're experiencing technical difficulties. Give me one second and I'm going to pull it up on my screen. Okay, so this is Ronan Park. Apologies. It's at 3,000 West Argyle Street in the Albany Park community area. All right, Sarah, we can go to the next one.
So this slide shows, you can see outlined in green, the extent of Ronan Park. It spans both sides of the North Shore Channel, the Chicago River. So the proposed project here is within those blue, where those blue arrows are pointing. It's sort of on the west bank of the river there at the southern end of the park between Ainsley and Lawrence Avenues. If we could go to the next slide. So the Chicago Park District is developing a new neighborhood gateway and river plaza at Ronan Park, based on a vision for this site prepared in partnership with the surrounding community, the Metropolitan Planning Council, and the North River Commission. The dark green portion that you see in the image is currently managed by the Chicago Park District, while the lighter green portion, sort of to the west there, is currently owned by the city of Chicago and has two different community garden spaces, one managed by Neighbor Space and another by a group called Global Gardens, which we'll get a little bit more into. So the site improvements will be funded through TIF through the city. The project budget, including design services, is $3.5 million. The Park District anticipates starting design work in December 2021 and is targeting a project completion in early 2024. Part of the reason for the longer timeframe on this project is because it is along the river. There's a whole lot of permitting that we need to do with the Army Corps. We may need to do an outfall additionally to the river to handle stormwater, so that permit process does typically take quite a while to get through, so we just wanted to make sure that we acknowledge that. Next slide, please. So this is a rendering showing the possible final outcome from the community plan that was put together. The project scope will include improvements to the south end of Ronan Park on land owned currently by MWRD that we currently lease as the Park District. The improvements to the west side of the park directly next to the river will include new plaza space, a covered stage, and a river-viewing platform, and the project scope on the western portion of the land will also include improvements to the community garden site located immediately west of Ronan that is occupied by both the Peterson Garden Project I mentioned and the Global Gardens. Just a quick note on Global Gardens, they're a really interesting organization. They work with refugees to the United States, and what they do is, they were farmers in their home countries, and they grow crops that they cooked with and used in their home country. They have plots that they, and market days where they sell these to local residents, so it's a really inspiring garden project that's going on there. So part of that work will, part of this work will help those two garden efforts as well. The MBE WBE participation for the project exceeds our 25 MBE and 5% WBE, and with that, I'm happy to take any questions you have.
Are there water sports there now? I saw boats in the rendering or what looked like kayaks or something.
Yeah, I don't think we have a kayak put in here now because we would need to get permits to do that, but we certainly have kayak places along the river on the north branch. The overlook at the moment is all that we have planned, but certainly as the community requests things, we can, we can look into further developments.
Okay. Smaller question. Are there other questions or concerns from other commissioners?
I don't have. Excited about the project. I live along the river on California, and I've really, the quality of life for residents and all the improvements that has happened is just remarkable.
We're doing something right, huh? Is there a motion?
So moved.
Second.
All right. If there's no objection, we will apply the last favorable roll call from the prior matter to this matter.
Any objections?
Hearing the room.
The motion carried and the matter is adopted.
Thank you. Next, also from the Director of Planning and Construction, authorization of a change order number one, not to exceed $4 million for the construction of Park 596 Administrative Headquarters Fieldhouse and Site Development, specification number P2015.
Thank you, Madam President. Again, Heather Gleason, it is recommended that a change order be approved affecting the contract with FH Passion and All Joint Venture. The construction scope of work changes are associated with numerous unforeseen conditions, including the removal of additional storage tanks, the removal of unforeseen concrete slabs and foundations, and additional building and site undercuts. As the President mentioned, the amount of the change order is not to exceed $4 million. So if we could, let's see, just stay there for a second, Sarah. So just to note a little bit, as we've got a lot of new board members here, we've actually brought this project before the board several times. This is actually our fourth board presentation. So the first time we came was in October of 2018 when we purchased the site, and then again in January 2019 to hire the architects and designers, John Ronan and his team, to design and lead the project. And then we came back again just earlier this year in March of 2021 to hire the construction contractors consisting of a joint venture between FH Passion and MBE Owned All Construction Group. But before we get into the details of the change order, we wanted to go through a little bit of how we got here and show not only that the significant improvement the community that the Park District is making with this construction project, but also note the severe need for environmental remediation and site cleanup that really illustrates that our project is not just building a new headquarters and park, but also about environmental justice for this community. If we could go to the next slide. So this just shows again where the site is located. It's at 4830 South Western Avenue in the Brighton Park community area, and one of the reasons that we were really excited to acquire this site is that the Brighton Park community area is one of the top five community areas in the city of Chicago that is actually underserved by public open space. At the time that we acquired this 17-acre property, the community needed 60-plus acres of open space in order to meet the two acres of open space per thousand resident metric. We could do the next slide, Sarah. So I'll briefly walk you through the site plan to orient you. Our site is bounded by Western Avenue on the east, the CTA Orange Line, Western Avenue Station on our south, South Rockwell Avenue on the west, and 48th Street on the north. And our new 17-acre campus includes numerous outdoor recreation facilities, including the construction of two artificial turf athletic fields with athletic field lighting, a grand lawn where the community can see movies in the park, or even host a farmer's market or other community events. We have a continuous walkway all the way around the site that includes going through the middle of the building in an open-air courtyard, and this walkway also has several locations around the park for displaying art, which is a specific request that the community made of us during our community meetings. It also includes, you can see there, to the north, a children's playground, nature play areas, and a splash pad. And then finally, on the east side of the site, we have natural area plantings that we've really worked closely with our natural resources team to develop on the east side of the park. Next slide, Sarah. So this is kind of what we're shooting for here. This is our finished rendering of the project, looking to the north and east. You can kind of see the city skyline way off there in the distance. So the building amenities will include a 20,000-square-foot fieldhouse for the community, and that includes providing indoor recreation amenities, including a gymnasium, fitness center, bathrooms and locker rooms, multipurpose rooms for meetings. So this is kind of what we're shooting for here. This is our finished rendering of the project, looking to the north and east. You can kind of see the city skyline way off there in the distance. So the building amenities will include a twenty thousand square foot field house for the community, and that includes providing indoor recreation amenities, including a gymnasium, fitness center, bathrooms and locker rooms, multipurpose rooms for meetings or gatherings, staff offices, a teen center, and a lobby space. The new fifty-eight thousand, one hundred square foot multi-story administrative headquarters space will also include, in addition to our offices, parking, walkways, a new boardroom, site lighting, and many other amenities. As mentioned, the site is also well-served by public transportation. It's located directly adjacent to the CTA Western Orange Line stop. And across the street is actually another CTA bus shelter that has four major bus lines. And we also have parking directly to the south. You can kind of see it on the photo there that will be provided for the facility. Next slide, please. So now that I've shown you the pretty pictures, here's kind of what the site looked like when we were about to start construction. So this is a drone shot. It's kind of looking to the north and west from Western Avenue. You can see the vacant parcel there, and it's surrounded by housing on the Norris Shields Middle School to the west there. And most of the site when we took over really was covered by scrub vegetation, piles and piles of debris, discarded electrical poles, and the like. So as you'll see in a moment, given the amount of material we found as we started construction, along with further revelations concerning the condition of the soil that we're dealing with here, we believe that only a significant effort from a government, government agency like the Park District could really get the site cleaned and developed and turned back into a space that the community and all of us can really be proud of. Several private developers had actually walked away from the site prior to acquiring it, prior to us acquiring it, rather than give it the cleanup that it really needed and deserved for the community. So discuss how we approached our environmental remediation and investigatory work prior to construction. I'm going to ask my colleague Dan Cooper if he could discuss that project in the next couple of slides. Dan?
Hello. Thanks, Heather. Hello, members of the board and Superintendent Escarino. I'm Dan Cooper. I'm the Director of Environmental Services for the Park District. So part of the reason we're here today for this change order request is due to running into nine underground storage tanks during construction. To provide some background and context, I'd like to start giving a brief, by giving a brief history, summary and history of the environmental work that's been completed at the site. The site was developed by various industrial and manufacturing facilities from nineteen twenty until two thousand and seven. All the structures have since been removed and the site's been vacant since twenty eleven. The previous industrial uses included several different metal and steel manufacturing facilities, as well as being home to the former world's famous chocolate factory. So the environmental work for this site really began even before we decided to acquire the site. This work included reviewing numerous environmental investigations that were previously completed to get an understanding of the environmental conditions prior to purchase. And so based on those previously done reports, we knew there were two hotspots. Next slide, please, Sarah. So we did know that there were two hotspots that were, would require active remediation. You can see those on the northern portion of the site. We use the term hotspot, meaning that the contamination in those areas was at a level it could not be left in place and capped with an engineered barrier per Illinois EPA rules. And also based on historical documentation, we knew that there were five underground storage tanks known to be associated with those hotspots. The remainder of the site had much lower levels of contamination that could be addressed with an engineered barrier installed in accordance with Illinois EPA rules. So after we acquired the site, we retained a professional engineering firm, enrolled the site into the state's site remediation program, and then completed additional environmental sampling to complete with the IEPA terms, a comprehensive site investigation report and remedial action plan to the IEPA. All told, our environmental investigation included over two hundred soil borings and the collection of four, over four hundred soil samples. And just for your reference, for a seventeen acre site, the Illinois EPA only minimally requires thirty-four borings to be considered a comprehensive investigation. So we really did do a very thorough investigation to the site before we started development. But even with this comprehensive investigation being done, we did understand that there was a possibility of identifying additional underground storage tanks. So we actively went out and looked for those. So as part of the investigation, we conducted ground penetrating radar survey of the site to try and look for these tanks. Unfortunately, the survey did not yield very good results due to subsurface concrete and debris, and no additional tanks were identified. After the remedial, remedial action plan was approved by the IEPA, we completed the active remediation of the two hotspots and we did remove the five known underground storage tanks. We submitted that as an interim completion report to the IEPA, which they then subsequently approved, that would leave only the engineered barrier installation for the remainder of the work that would need to be done during development. Next slide, please. But unfortunately, we did encounter nine more underground storage tanks during the construction activities. These tanks were located near, but just outside of the hotspot remediation areas that we previously cleaned. While we knew that the additional tanks were a possibility, there was no evidence that they existed. There was no documentation that they were ever installed. There was no observable contamination at the surface. And during the hotspot removals and the underground stor, previous underground storage tank removals, we, there was no evidence that they, that the tanks were there. So running into them really was definitely an unforeseen condition. Next slide, please. So the nine tanks were removed in accordance with the IEPA requirements. Work included pumping out the tanks, removing and disposing of the tanks, hauling off the contaminated soil, and backfilling the removal areas. And it is these costs that are included as part of this change order request. And before I turn back over to Heather, finally, for some perspective, in the city of Chicago, especially on former industrial properties, running into unknown and undocumented underground storage tanks really is not uncommon. It's one of the reasons that these properties were often, they often sit vacant for years or decades because environmental conditions from prior industrial use really do complicate redevelopment. But I do, but please know that all of these environmental conditions are being addressed in accordance with and in consultation with the Illinois EPA. And upon completion, the site will have a comprehensive no further remediation certification from the state. And with that, I'll turn it back to Heather.
Thank you, Dan. Appreciate it. Sarah, could you advance the slides one? So one of the other things in addition to the storage tanks that Dan just mentioned that we found on the site are mounds of concrete. This slide actually shows where we were digging for the new artificial turf fields and where they were intended to go. For scale, that stake that you see in the image is actually four feet high. So as we were started digging, we uncovered a lot of this concrete. And during design, it was not evident or apparent as to what of the previous buildings were actually left on the site. So the documents therefore identified the visible surface slabs for removal, along with assumptions on the depth to establish an overall volume for removal. The construction of the new park and headquarters has encountered the remaining building foundations and building slabs, which were not removed from the site when the buildings were demolished. All of the existing building slabs must be removed. In the footprint of the new building, all existing foundations will also be removed. In the rest of the park site, the existing foundations are evaluated for conflicts with utilities, conflicts with new site foundations, and conflicts with the elevation of our environmental barrier, and then we determine whether or not those also need to be removed. If we can go to the next slide, Sarah. So this slide shows an example of where we found, you can kind of see where the the machine has found that flat buried foundation. And it's actually in direct conflict with the circular structure that you see there and the two gentlemen standing next to it. That's actually a sewer structure and piping that we need for the building in the park. But because of how far down the slab was, it wasn't picked up in any of these investigations. And so you can gauge the scale of how deep it was by sort of the size of the people in that picture, but we just wanted to illustrate sort of some of the other things that we found. If we could go to the next slide. So sort of the third and last factor that's been affecting the amount of this change order and sort of what we're encountering on site, we wanted to explain in a little bit more detail. It's called an undercut. So this is sort of showing you the amount of the undercut that's needed for the project. And for those of you who aren't familiar with that term, an undercut is the removal of unsuitable material from beneath a foundation or other improvement, which then establishes a subbase. Then we can provide the necessary bearing capacity for any of the building and site improvements that we're making with the project. The way that I started thinking about it as we started uncovering these conditions is that the soil that we found is just not solid enough to build on. As we kept digging down, it was almost like dust or liquid. It was just not going to bear the weight of any of the improvements that we had planned for the site. And so it's essential to construct on a surface that can bear the weight of all of our improvements and avoid those problems in the future. Because the initial geotechnical report had a wide range of undercut assumptions for the building foundations from about one foot to ten feet, identified in the soil borings, direction was given to our proposers, our general contractors during our proposal process to assume six feet of undercut from the bottom of our designed footing level. And any undercut beyond that six feet is an additional cost to the project essentially. So when construction began and the soil encounter on the site was this loose, non-cohesive urban fill, which would not provide the necessary bearing capacity for the building, the extent of the undercut was then reviewed and found to be much more significant than the assumptions for the project. The undercuts were also necessary, not just for the building, but for some of the site features. We kept coming across this loose, non-cohesive soil. And while the undercut depth is not as extensive as what we found in the building, the projected area does include beneath the artificial turf fields, beneath portions of the parking lot, on the south end of the site, and then under our utility trenches as well. Next slide, Sarah. So this slide essentially shows the remedy for an undercut when you have to remove and haul off the bad soil and essentially bring in stone to stabilize the site. It's essential, again, that we construct on a surface that can bear the weight of the new improvements and the kinds of problems we can avoid or we might encounter in the future. If we don't do that, are things like cracks in the building foundation, sinking fields, failed pavement, you know, collapsed pipes. So it is really important for us to get that stable base to build on. And I did want to give you a little bit more information about the change order itself. So it is a not to exceed change order of four million dollars. The original contract amount that was approved in March of twenty twenty-one was sixty-four million, five hundred and five thousand, six hundred and fifty dollars. With this additional change order, if it's approved, the total contract amount would be sixty-eight million, five hundred and five thousand, six hundred and fifty dollars. The mandatory contractual requirements for the MBE and WBE participation rates remains at twenty-six and six, and that is a little bit one percent higher than the Park District's. Because this project was so large, it was required to be a planned development by the City of Chicago and the zoning that was required for the site. Up to this point in time, the contractor is exceeding that amount on the job. However, the board letter was written without any additional participation dollars as part of this change order to illustrate that the contractor has to maintain, no matter what, the minimum contract requirements of twenty-six MBE and six percent WBE for the project. The values aren't reflected in the letter because the work is still ongoing in the field and it's, we're not final yet. Participation by MBE Contractor Efficient Trucking and WBE Contractor CATCO Development will be part of the change order. And once the change order work has been completed, the contractor then has to go back, reconcile the actual MBE WBE dollar participation by the subcontractors, and then provide all the updated schedule As and Bs. And again, they have to maintain, no matter what, that twenty-six and six participation. Lastly, I just wanted to say a word a little bit about how we did some due diligence on the change order amount with the contractors. So the contractor came back, you know, identified some of these additional costs. And then that proposal is vetted by a number of folks. So it was reviewed by our architect and engineer of record, as well as our Park District Construction Manager. The proposal backup also includes, so when they haul dirt and, you know, things offsite, there's actually haul-off tickets that they have to verify the material quantities, the labor hours that they are charging, and the equipment costs that we can then evaluate. In the case of the undercuts that we just discussed, the locations were sprayed in the fields and then reviewed by the independent testing agency, our architect and engineer, as well as our staff at the Park District. The cost of materials, labor, and equipment are reviewed against industry standards and past Park District projects and flagged if they are outside of the expected cost that we would normally see. And if a subcontractor proposed costs that are egregious, generally speaking, the GC usually agrees with us that, you know, the Park District prices that, that the, that the subcontractors charging isn't reasonable. And they do have the option to be either coming down in price or the GC can say, look, you know, this is just too high and go find the work required from someone else at a more reasonable rate. So those are just some details in the change order. And if we could go to the last slide there, Sarah. I just wanted to leave you again with the sort of montage of the final result we're hoping for. We know we've talked a lot about sort of the, the environmental remediation and site work that's been needed so far for construction. But we really believe that all of this work and these images were shared with the community during our multiple community meetings on this project is really a transformational investment in the Brighton Park community area. So we recognize this is, you know, challenging from a construction standpoint, but we really hope that this result that you see on the screen there benefits the Park District and the community for many years to come. And that concludes our presentation. We did have a little bit of a video of the construction work. I don't know if, I know we had some technical difficulties, Sarah. Were we able to get that one up? And then I'm happy to take any questions you have.
Yes, absolutely. We're pulling it up right now.
How long is the video?
It's one minute.
Okay, that's good enough.
And there's no sound, so there's nothing wrong with it. It's just kind of showing you some of the construction work.
Let me say a little bit while this is, is moving along here, because Alderman Nunes and I heard your briefing on this, and we both pushed back hard on the notion of a four million dollar change order because that is a very large amount of money. And we wanted to be able to assure people who are paying attention to this, that this was not a way for somebody to come in and lowball a bid and then raise the amount of money that they're being paid by coming in and asking for a change order. So I'm very glad to hear that you put every change order through its paces and that you do the due diligence on it and that you just don't routinely accept at face value the cost estimates that are put before you when people come to say that they are asking for a change order.
Absolutely, Madam President. We definitely put them through their paces. And I can assure you, we've had a couple of construction teams on different projects that have come in to argue change orders with us. And we have piled through their charges, their costs, their spreadsheets. Our construction team is very diligent about pushing back on cost. Obviously, we're a public agency. We have to. We don't have the budgets that maybe a private developer would to be able to accommodate additional costs. So yes, thank you. And, and I think to the, you know, your, your point about the low bidder, you know, then with more change orders coming in, we, we might see more changers on this, but on this project later on. But this really was unforeseen conditions. I think no matter who got the contract, we were going to encounter these things. So as you heard from Dan, as we went through this really exhaustive environmental review before we even started construction, it just didn't pick up all of the very buried foundations, concrete, storage tanks, you know, even in the investigation that we did do, which was pretty extensive. So we were unfortunately going to encounter these conditions, and I've just been saying that this is kind of what environmental justice looks like, is cleaning a site that has been so contaminated for this community and so vacant for so long and turning it back into something that, that they can use and be proud of.
Mrs. Commissioner, I have a couple of questions.
Sure.
Um, is there a contingency budget? And if so, how much?
There is a contingency budget. It would not be enough to cover this four million dollars. And I've got my construction seam sitting here, so just one second when I get them. Okay, we've got a two point two million dollar contingency budget. And generally, what you wouldn't want to do is spend down your whole contingency in order to say accommodate this change. And part of the reason for that is then we have to come back for every single.
I'm familiar with it.
Yeah, yeah, but we do.
Does the contingency come back to the organization if it's not used?
Yes.
Okay. And is the project, what is the timeline on the project?
So we are planning to be finished in March of twenty twenty-three. We are currently, you know, still in the early stages of construction. And we are, you know, just for the board to know, encountering some of the global supply chain issues that many of you've probably heard in the news. That's certainly going to impact us to some extent. We are working very diligently with the contractor to try to preorder and think ahead. Even playground equipment, we're hearing from different manufacturers, needs a pretty significant lead time. So we are doing our best to manage that situation as best we can, but our plan is to be open in March of twenty twenty-three.
And when did it start?
So we started construction. So we started construction early this summer in June. We had a groundbreaking with the mayor, I believe, in July.
Does the project require going underground for build out?
We are building up, so it is a two story building and we have a flat slab foundation. The only places that we've really had to dig down, as we explained, were sort of those undercuts for that really bad soil. We had to get it out of there and then fill it with rock.
Okay. Who's the project manager on it from the organization?
So Nicole Sheehan is with me here in the room. She is our capital projects manager on this job. She just recently wrapped up the Gately Field House, so she has a lot of experience on it. And our deputy construction manager, who's also here with me, Linda Daly, is also helping to manage that project.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Other questions or concerns? If not, may I have a motion to approve?
I'll give you a motion, but I just have a question. Did Commissioner Munoz get a promotion or get elected to Alderman City Council? You introduced him as Alderman. You said you and Alderman Munoz, you know, vetted this and I'm just like, this is new information.
Not at all.
A couple, two days ago, but I didn't know that was on.
Yeah, you're a man with a lot of jobs.
No, not at all. But thanks for catching it. I missed it.
Set into the briefing with me and we talked about this. I'm sorry, I called you out of your title.
I don't know. Maybe, I don't know if it was a promotion or not, but you know, I appreciate both of you vetting this so significantly. So with that, so moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you. If there's no objection, we will apply the last favorable roll call from the prior matter to this matter. Any objections? Hearing none.
Motion carried and the matter is adopted.
Thank you. At this time, we will go into closed session to consider various matters which are pursuant to the Illinois Open Meetings Act appropriately discussed in closed session. There will be a discussion of a personnel matter pursuant to 5 Illinois CS 120, Section 2, Subsection C1. Is there a motion?
So moved.
A second?
Second.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Anybody against? Motion carries. The meeting is now in closed session. We will return. Thank you.
For everyone coming back, please make sure you might have been automatically muted. So just be sure that you were unmuted.
Mm-hmm. Um. Are we ready?
Are we missing Commissioner Edwards?
Commissioner Edwards had a hard stop at 3:15, so he actually ran over a little bit. Second. Great. Sarah?
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Against? Return to open session.
Thank you. The Board of Commissioners met and closed session pursuant to 5 Illinois CS 120, Section 2, Subsection C1 to discuss a personnel matter. No further action was taken. So.
I'd like to, at this point though, take a point of personal privilege and address the board and the people on hand. So for more than 30 years, I've been in public service for the city of Chicago for all but three of those years and right to the present, I volunteered as a board member and in board leadership. In all those years, I operated with fairness, honesty, and integrity. These are the values that have guided my actions every step of the way. And in all cases, my commitment to public service has come from my heart. I love this city and its residents and have been guided by my desire to do what I can to give back. So today, I speak to you with that same commitment. As I have said before, I am deeply sorry for the culture of abuse and harassment that was allowed to fester in the beaches and pools division of the Chicago Park District. It is apparent that this went on for many years, even decades, before I joined the Chicago Park District Board. I take responsibility because it came to light on my watch. My fellow board members are not to blame for this culture of abuse and should not be held responsible. I want to make that clear. My fellow commissioners were not aware of the investigation for many months. The Office of Inspector General reports only to the board president, and all investigations are held confidential until they reach a conclusion. That is not the best protocol, but that is the protocol that I observed, and I have recommended to the board that it form a committee to oversee IG investigations going forward from here. I fully supported a thorough investigation, one that followed the facts to reveal what happened, who was responsible for this abusive behavior, and who tried to cover it up instead of addressing it. While the facts may not matter to everyone, I am confident that the facts to date and those yet to be disclosed will show that I acted honestly and responsibly here, as I have throughout my entire public career. If you know me, then you know me, and you know that's how I have lived my life, publicly and privately. My integrity and reputation are among the things that I value most. I came to this board position with my integrity and reputation intact. I would do nothing in this role or in any position to put that at risk. I have worked alongside the new CPD leadership to initiate policy changes that are underway, and there is much more to come to build a positive nurturing culture the Park District, its employees, and patrons all deserve. As the work at CPD moves forward, I am gratified to see the positive impact of new leadership. I have known and worked with interim superintendent Rosa Escarino for many years. I respect and admire her for her ability, her fresh perspective, and the energy that she is bringing to the Chicago Park District. With this understanding, I've made the decision to step down, guided by my values and consistent with my legacy of integrity. This will be my last meeting, my last day as president and as a member of the Chicago Park District Board of Commissioners. Now let me be clear. I am not being forced out. Mayor Lightfoot did not ask me to resign. She has been resolute in her support of me publicly and privately, and for that, I am profoundly grateful. I thank Mayor Lightfoot for allowing me to serve the Chicago Park District under her administration and for allowing me the freedom to make this choice for myself and by myself. I extend my sincere thanks and gratitude to the many great men and women who work here, who have worked here over the years. I grew up in the Chicago Parks, and I've met so many of those dedicated workers throughout the years, and I've met so many more being on the board for these last years. Chicago Parks are a vital part of the fabric of life here. For generations, the parks have been our front yard gardens, our backyard playgrounds, the places where we gather with our family and friends to learn, to play, and to preserve our health. With a lifelong appreciation for that role, it has been my honor and my privilege to serve as president of the Chicago Park District Board of Commissioners. I leave you, knowing that you are in good hands with a board comprised of committed public servants and a great new leadership team. I am stepping off this stage and onto the next with my head held high and the knowledge that I did my best to serve. Thank you all. May I have a motion to adjourn?
Thank you, Avis, for everything that you have done for the city of Chicago, for the Chicago Park District. I am, we are profoundly grateful to you and very sorry to see you go. I move to adjourn if there are no other comments from the commissioners.
If I may, I'd just like to say thank you, Avis, and, you know, for your vote of confidence and allowing me to come into this role as interim, and I wish you all the best. I've known you for many years. And again, thank you for your vote of confidence and for your commitment to the city.
You're just what this park district needs at this moment.
Avis, thank you for your service. And now, I'll second the motion.
Thank you.
Thank you for your service, Avis.
Thank you, Avis.
Thank you. Thank you, everybody. I've enjoyed my time. It's been properly moved and seconded.
Okay, all in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
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 Against? Motion carried. The meeting is now adjourned.
Thank you.